Like welcome everyone to this meeting of the Marion County Board of Ed. Before we actually start the meeting, I've asked Ms. Fowler to have a word of prayer.
Father, we're so thankful for this opportunity to meet together for the betterment of our schools. Lord, we thank you for the way you've blessed us and blessed our school system. And we pray your guidance today that we make wise decisions, that we make godly decisions. And we thank you again for just being with us in this endeavor. We praise you for that, Lord, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
We'll take a look at the agenda. We have a pretty long agenda today. Well, we'll adopt it, hopefully we'll adopt the agenda, approve minutes of our last meeting, review our financial and bank statements, payroll and payments, local school payments. Then we get to do something really fun and that's recognize our outstanding students. We'll hopefully approve summer school and policy revisions. Give permission to enter into a contract with the Alabama Association of School Boards. Give permission to enter into a contract with class wallets. Approve procedure for anaphylaxis preparedness program. Approve increase in school employee breakfast prices. Give permission to accept bids on VHS desks and backstoves. Permission to accept bids on PHS mower and tractor. Permission to see bids for buses and phone books. We'll take a look at school trips and use of facilities and last personnel.
Madam President, I would recommend that we accept the agenda as presented.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Jones makes the motion, a second. Ms. Fowler, second, all in favor, and it is unanimous.
Madam President, I would ask that, as we normally did, that we would take items two through five as one action. And those items are in your chair panel. With the minute, financial and bank statements, where there is no extra minute of financial bank statements. Payroll and payments and local school payments. So do you want to take a minute and, you may worry, look at those. Okay, are there any questions on those items? If not, then I would recommend that you approve items two through five as presented in your chair panel.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Weatherly makes the motion, a second. Ms. Fowler makes the second, all in favor. It passes unanimously.
Okay, and then my question. We get to do the fun part and if one of you has a camera, I don't know where Scott is this morning, but we need to get some pictures so that we can do some pictures for the paper. So if one of you doesn't mind. We have four students in our system this year that on their ACT composite scored a thirty or above. And as you all well know, that is quite an accomplishment. And we're very proud of these students and I know their parents certainly are too, because those numbers also represent dollar signs, don't they? Because it's very helpful, because you can get such good scholarship money for a thirty or higher under ACT composite. So we're very proud of these students and we want to recognize them today. And we'll try to get a picture of each one of them as their plaques presented and we'll do a group picture at the end. Phillips High School had one student this year who scored a thirty or higher, and that is Jacob Frederick. And Jacob, come on up and I'll tell them a little bit about you. Jacob is the grandson of Sherri Bray. We're happy to have Sherri with us today. He plans to attend Bevill State Community College next year. And he wants to be a high school English teacher. And this is the deal, we want you to come back to Marion County to be a high school English teacher, okay? So we'll just do a picture. We're very proud of you, congratulations. Hamilton High School had three this year, Chandler Peoples. Chandler's ACT composite score was a thirty-two. And let me tell them a little bit about Chandler. Chandler is the son of Joey Peoples and Brandy Chandler. He plans to attend Bevill State Community College next year. And I think he's kind of like me when I started college. He's not really sure yet what he wants to do, but we know that whatever he chooses, he's going to be successful. And Chandler, we congratulate you, we'll do a picture. Congratulations. Emma Smith. Emma is the daughter of Carrie and Sherri Smith, who is one of our retirees this year. So we congratulate her on that. Emma scored, also had a composite score of thirty-two on her ACT. She plans to attend the University of Alabama in Birmingham and major in nursing. And so we congratulate Emma on her composite score of thirty-two. Congratulations. And Mariah Wilson. Mariah is the daughter of Christie and Richard Wilson. Mariah scored a thirty on her ACT composite. And she plans to attend the University of Alabama and major in social work. So congratulations to you. Thank you. And I think what we normally do is get a picture with all the recipients and standing in front of the board, so we don't want to break our tradition. And while you're getting up here, let me, I have those boxes for the plaques. I should put them in that little cover here as well. Okay, we probably need to get you over to sort of sit to the side.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
You too.
I might not have any right there. I know he likes for his hair to look like it's supposed to. Okay, now Mama, now Mama pictures. Right, thank you so much, and congratulations, Fowler.
Thank you. Mom, real quick, no problem posting those to social, to the board's social media. Is there, does anybody check today? The ones I took, then we'll get Ms. Amber to put them on the board's Instagram.
You all are more than welcome to stay for the entire board meeting. If you don't want to stay for the entire board meeting, we understand. But you can do what you need to do. Yep, you can get out that way, yes.
Next, we have approved summer school.
So we're going to do summer school a little bit different than we did it last year. Last year, we only offered it to students in grades nine through twelve. And we decided that we needed to add the seventh and eighth grade back this year. So what we're planning to do is have summer school over at the alternative schools. Again, we kind of felt like that might be a better place, because instead of sitting at lunch table shoulder to shoulder, they'll be separated more. We are also going to have an attendance requirement this year. They can only miss two days per term. Unless, you know, they have some kind of terrible illness that they have doctor's excuses for. But last summer, we just ran into a problem with attendance. And if they don't come, especially those students that are working on access, they are not going to be successful in those courses. So we are going to require that they, that they attend summer school. And we're also going to have, there's another component to summer school that is not going to really be held here at the Board of Education. But if you approve for advancement, then those students would be able to work on advancement and just take the test at their local high school. So that will not be held here if that policy is approved. But we're going to charge two hundred dollars per course, which is what we've been doing. Nine through twelve will be on access. Seventh and eighth grade will be on Odysseyware. And we are also going to have a class works requirement for students in seventh and eighth grade. Hoping that whatever deficiencies they might have in reading or math or both, we can plug some of those holes while they're here at summer school. So we're going to, they'll be doing their coursework on Odysseyware. And then any kind of remediation they might need in reading or math will be done on class works while they're here as well. The cost is, like I said, going to be two hundred dollars per course. But this year, we are going to have a discounted rate of one hundred dollars, or fifty percent discount for students who receive a fully reduced lunch. So are there any questions about summer school? And then I would recommend that you approve summer school for students in grades seven through twelve to be held at the Marion County Alternative School. The cost will be two hundred dollars per course. And there will be a fifty percent discount for students who receive a free or reduced lunch.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes that motion, a second. Mr. Weatherly, second, it's all in favor. And it passes unanimously. Next?
Okay, Madam President, I would recommend at this time that we go into executive session to discuss a security measure.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Okay, Mr. Jones makes that motion, a second. Ms. Fowler, second, it's all in favor. And it passes unanimously.
Hey, I would recommend that we resume another session.
Okay, do I have a motion? Can Ms. Fowler make some motion? Mr. Weatherly, second, it's all in favor. And it passes unanimously. Okay, next, approve policy revisions.
Patrick handed out some policy revisions to you at the last board meeting. So he's going to come up and talk a little bit about, if you want to come up here, you can. He's going to talk a little bit about some of the revisions. And there might be a little deciding which one you want to adopt, so.
Right, so what I'll do is just run through them quickly with you and see, there may be some you want to just pull out and then approve the remaining ones together, if that's, if that's a good way to do it with you. Because, and I gave you the votes from the policy committee, so you could kind of look at those. The first one that we looked at was summer school. Ms. West already talked about allowing students to have the opportunity to advance through summer school. And they, they would do that at the individual school sites. They wouldn't come to regular summer school, they would just do it at the school. They'd do it through access. And then come to the school site to take their test with a facilitator there. So that would be the first one, and I know the committee was in favor of that one. The second one on the dress code, and I, I gave you all the dress code proposals together, because if you look at the dress code, there's a bunch of different little sub-things, but they were all turned in together. So that's kind of the reason I did it that way. The first one that was proposed was the, the idea to let students have studs in their nose, all right? As opposed to now where they only allowed to have studs or pins, et cetera, in their ears. That one was rejected by our committee, and I wondered maybe you might want to pull that one out. But I'm not sure.
Just take it in.
Okay, that's what I thought. So we'll take that one out. Is it, well, everybody good with that? Okay, all right, so number five, the committee liked number five. That provision in the dress code, which currently says sundresses and backless dresses or tops will be worn with a jacket or an appropriate covering. This proposal just says sundresses, backless dresses, or tank tops cannot be worn to school. The committee approved it, or recommended to approve it, but that's, so do you want to leave it in to approve? Okay, yes? All right. Okay, all right. So then dress code provision number eleven was one that I thought we might take out, just because the committee was pretty heavily against it, but that, again, that's up to you. The current policy says jeans and other articles of clothing must be clean with absolutely no rips, holes, or rabbles in jeans, slacks, or shorts above the knee. No patches except with same material. The proposal says jeans and other articles of clothing must be clean with absolutely no holes, rips, or rabbles. Wasn't sure about that one, because there was a lot of discussion about that in our policy committee.
So the question is, can they have holes or ripped places below the knee?
Correct, correct.
Which is currently what we have.
Which is currently what we allow.
And there was a proposal not to allow even below the knee, any holes or rips.
That's going to be tough to enforce.
Yeah, correct, correct. So, so if we take that one out, correct, take that one out. I, I would, yeah, so anyway.
It would be, because it's hard to find jeans, you know, they don't have one of them.
Well, and some of our kids can't, can't help.
That's a hard question. That's why I was like, hell.
So we'll take that one out, and that would not be in our list of policies to approve. Number twelve, and by the way, when we clear dress code, this will go a lot faster, y'all know how that goes. Number twelve, sweatpants and jogging pants are currently allowed as long as they are fitted properly. Currently leggings may be worn if shirt or top goes within four inches above the knee. Pajamas may not be worn to school unless it is special dress update. The proposal was sweatpants and jogging pants are allowed as long as they're properly fitted. But here's the key, the proposal is to say leggings may not be worn to school. I do know that's a big issue, a lot of problems in our schools with that. So that was the proposal. The committee voted five to two to keep that policy, or to, excuse me, to change the policy. So do you want to leave it in to approve it, or do you want to take it out?
I'm going to be okay.
Well, you're dealing with style. And what they, what they bought, you know, it's just, it's one of those.
That's correct.
My principle is heavily against leggings.
Yes, heavily against problem. Could like says, take this, in other words, to approve this replacement.
The problem that's been brought to my attention is that some of the teachers and secretaries are wearing them when the kids are not being allowed to. That, and I know we don't have a dress policy for teachers right now, but that's a problem as far as, you know.
Yes, it is. And you know, that's one thing, I know I said last year, it has been said before, we don't have a dress code for our employees, but they should at minimal go by the student dress code. But they, but they don't always do that.
That's true.
That's right. So if you have, so we could have a situation where we don't allow students to wear that to school, but we have teachers or secretaries wearing it.
Let's, let's add to that that staff is encouraged to follow the same dress code. Can we encourage it with that?
I would think that would just come from the superintendent rather than, than policy.
She would just say that.
Yes, she would just suggest.
And I will say the board asked me again to encourage you to follow the student dress code.
But you, you are in favor of leaving that in our set of the, set of policies to approve. So we would make that change, if leggings are.
To do away with legs.
To do away with legs, yes, correct.
I, I would like to see that.
I'm kind of hesitant, I'm like.
Okay, in the wintertime, that's going to be really hard to enforce if you're a dress.
My feeling is that leggings maybe should be able to be worn, but the stipulation is that that top has got to come down.
Well, that's what we had, was that.
Which is current policy. Current policy says.
Well, we could, we could table that.
I was going to say, we could take it out.
We could table it and wait and look at that, give you more time to all think and talk and discuss. We can take that out, table that policy, and bring that up again at the next board discussion.
Right, so that's dress code, number twelve, by the way, provision number twelve in our dress code. We're going to leave it as is.
Sometimes it's hard to tell the straight leg pants. For leggings, I mean, there's a fine line there.
Very fine line, yes.
That's true. It's a fashion thing. We're going into this problem every year with the fashion.
Yes. The last dress code proposal was, under dress code provision number thirteen, currently it says articles of clothing must be appropriate for schoolware. Students in grades K through four may wear shorts, skirts, and dresses appropriate for school. Any apparel made worn by students in grades five through twelve must be worn at the waist and to the kneecap. It just simply changes it to this, if you're looking at it, shorts are not allowed for high school students. That's the proposal, is to take shorts out. You know, again, I gave you the vote, the committee vote was three in favor, four against. Do you want to leave it as it is, or do you want to change it?
And we can put that one off if you want more time to think about that.
It's no problem. So we'll leave that out. So of the dress code, the only one that is going to stay in our list of policies to approve is the one that takes away backless dresses and sundresses, right, that's number five. If I deal with that. All right, okay. The rest are pretty simple. JBCBA was the non-resident student policy. All that we're proposing is that we add pre-K. Currently it says K through twelve, we're just talking about adding the, the pre, so that we can allow pre-K students to be a part of our non-resident student. They still have to be approved by this office, so there's still that same screening process, but, but it does make it possible to do that.
Did we add, did we add the deadline as to getting that, turning it to the actual form?
In red.
It wasn't, okay, that was the problem we had last year though.
Correct, correct.
It's down there.
Correct. JMB was the proposal to adopt a bullying prevention policy. And I'll say this about JMB and JNC, the bullying policy and the juvenile sex policy, we're required now by state law to have policies now on those issues. And we just took the model policy that was put out by the State Department and put that in our proposal to adopt that policy. Criteria for valedictorians and salutatorians, the proposal is just to remove the ten points that we currently give for AP classes and we figure GPAs, because the proposal says that now with dual enrollment, early college, other things, there's a lot of things now that are added on. And so the concern was, is it fair to give ten points for AP when you don't give ten points for dual enrollment, you don't give ten points for early college? And so the proposal is just to take out the ten points altogether, put everybody on the same, same criteria.
And that would start with next year's ninth grade class, because you really can't change that for students that, when they started in the ninth grade, it's got to stay that way till they finish high school. Any discussion about that policy?
All right. The next one was the head lice policy, and I'm going to let Ms. West talk about that one if she wants to. I know that's something we've talked a lot about, and I know you're very passionate about it.
According to the National School Nurse Protocol, keeping students out of school for nets is no longer suggested in National School Nurse Protocol. There is, you know, there's some, there's some discussion or disagreement about that because, you know, because people don't want head lice in our schools. And I certainly don't want head lice in our schools either. However, we're never going to eradicate head lice from schools. And when we don't let them come back because they still, you know, the nets are the eggs that are attached to the hair shaft. If they've been treated and they don't have any live bugs, then the, the eggs are supposed to be dead. Now, that does not mean, there are, every egg is not always dead. So that's why there was in there about, and this was really our old policy, that was in there about them being rechecked after seven days to see, to make sure they don't have live bugs again. But we're sending children home and not allowing them to come back to school until somebody has picked every one of those out of their hair. And it's just, it's, it's not good for those children, because they are missing, some of, some of them chronically have head lice, even though we don't let them come back without nets. You know, you all know, if, if everything in that home is not washed in hot water and things aren't closed up in plastic, then it's still in, in the home. And it just, it concerns me that we are sending children home and not letting them have the opportunity to come back to school when that is not even according to National Nurse Protocol anymore. So I feel like it's, I feel like it's unfair to some, I mean, to the, to the children. They can't help it, that nobody's getting all those nets picked out of their hair. I have, I have, I used to, I used to be a net picker at the elementary school. On Mondays when they would come back, and I was the counselor, I was the recheck person. And, you know, and I would stand in there in my office and pick nets so that they could come back to school. But that's, you know, that doesn't normally happen. And so they're just not, they're not being allowed to come back. And some of them are missing five days, maybe, maybe ten days of school before. And so they get behind and.
And that again goes back to the home. A lot of them don't have anyone that cares enough to do it.
And, and some of them don't have anybody then that can help them catch up on all the work that they miss. And so I just, you know, I just don't feel like it's in the best interest of, of many, many of our students to, that, that we're keeping them out of school for that. Now, the policy would lead to you don't come back with live bugs on your head, but.
And you have to have been treated, right?
Right, well, and, and if you haven't been treated, you're still going to have live bugs on your head. So, you know, the policy would change. And like I said, it's going back to a policy that we had a few years ago. It's gone back and forth over the last several years. At one time, the state said we couldn't have a no nets policy. But then they changed that. And, and then we ended up having a no nets policy again. But it is not according, and I called the state, the lady that's over school nurses at the State Department in Alabama, and she said that is not according to protocol anymore. So that was, but, you know, there was, there was discussion, I think, and there were some for and some against. And I think it was four to three.
That's correct.
Four against, three four.
That's correct. Want to leave it in our list to approve, or you want to take it out?
Or do you want more time? You may want to do research yourself, but look at it, look at that yourself. You know, whatever you want to do is certainly fine, but you know, you may want to look up national research and things like that yourself, to, to see what you think.
Silence gives consent.
If the state has that in place, then I don't think.
Well, I called the lady that's over school nurses at the State Department because I didn't want to be suggesting something that's out of line with what everybody else is doing, or what they see is in the best interest for our schools. So that is why I got in touch with her, to ask her what, what other, what other systems we're doing.
I think that we give our nurses a little bit more freedom, don't you think, too, to, to sort of judge for themselves if this kid is ready to go, so.
Right.
But I know it's a huge problem for us from a truancy standpoint, that we really can't address, and the kids are missing school, and we don't want them missing school.
And they're missing enrollment, too.
Yes, correct.
It affects, well, the fifteen days in your chronically accident. But as Patrick said, if he takes them to judgment, he's going to say, okay, well, you sent them home. You're the ones not letting them come to school. And then, and DHR, there's nothing they can do in this situation anymore, so it's.
The next one, policy proposal, DM. Clint talked to you earlier, I believe, about using this third-party option to allow our teachers to spend their instructional supply funds. All that change does, when you read it, it just allows him to, to do that. And it just changes so that, you know, currently, the only way that they can use their instructional money is if they go through a PO, and that just adds, or a, a board-approved third-party account or whatever. So did I say that pretty good? Didn't read the whole policy to you, but that's all that policy does. The last one is about nine weeks examinations. We had two proposals on that. Neither one were very popular in our committee, to be honest with you. I didn't. I didn't pull them before, I'm gonna let you have a chance to see them because I just think that's the right thing to do. Um, but neither one of them were really very popular. One of them, uh, you know, the current policy says that you can exempt nine weeks exams in one class per nine weeks based on, uh, attendance. Well, one policy proposal, which is number one, it just says that, that each class stands alone. In other words, you can, you, so I guess theoretically you could exempt all those classes in each nine weeks. Um, and then the other one is a little more complicated, if you read it, it has a set of criteria based on grades and it, it's kind of, uh, there's a lot in there. I'm gonna read it all to you, I, I gave it to you last month for your review. So I just need to know if you want to put either one of those in the list to approve, or just leave them both out, and then we can revisit the nine weeks exam policy later.
I'm gonna need to pull it out.
Okay, pull both of them out, so maybe one of those will be. So just to clarify, then I will leave you all on them. So the list that we're, uh, proposing to approve would be summer school, it'd be dress code number five, it would be the non-resident policy, bullying prevention, juvenile sex offender policy, criteria for battle and sow, head lice policy, classroom instructional funds, and that's it. Thank you.
And I would recommend that you approve the policy revisions as presented and as revised.
Ms. Jones, do I have a motion? Ms. Jones makes the motion, the second, all in favor, and it is unanimous.
Okay, we had a presentation, I don't know, probably two or three months ago, from the attorney that contracts with the Alabama Association of School Boards. And she came and presented the process for policy review and analysis. We were given a quote for twelve thousand five hundred. Half of that has to be paid upfront and the other half is paid at the end of the process. And, um, I think, you know, I know that you all were very interested in, in cleaning up our policy, our policies. Because we have a lot of outdated policies, we have policies from the nineteen nineties, or, or right around nineteen ninety. And, um, so I would recommend that you give permission to enter into a contract with AASB for policy review and analysis. And again, the quote that we were given was twelve thousand five hundred.
Okay, do I have a motion? Okay, Ms. Jones makes the motion, the second, Ms. Fowler seconds, all in favor, and it is unanimous. Next we go to class wallet.
Clint did a presentation last night, um, class wallet. And it would, again, just give, um, teachers the opportunity to be able to purchase things. Their CISF money would be loaded into their class wallet, and that is the amount that they would have. And those purchases would still be approved here because, um, Melinda and/or Clint would get an email that tells what that teacher was wanting to buy. It will allow them to, um, buy things like as needed during the school year. So, um, I think it's a, it's a good thing for teachers. And I would recommend that you give permission to enter into a contract with class wallet for teacher purchases.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, Mr. Weatherly seconds, all in favor, and it passes unanimously.
And one thing we had talked about was possibly going ahead with that and allowing Kickstart Kindergarten teachers to kind of do it on a, to have a trial run this summer. Because they'll be buying supplies for Kickstart Kindergarten, so that would, um, that would take care of that.
Okay. A group procedure for anaphylaxis preparedness program.
What was it?
This one?
Rave again, what's that word?
That's a hard word. It means having trouble raving.
'Cause that is in your share file, and those are, again, procedures recommended by the state. And I would recommend that you approve the procedure for anaphylaxis preparedness program.
So that fast, right?
Have you all had time to look at that?
I have.
Okay, do I have a motion? Can Ms. Fowler make the motion, the second? Mr. Weatherly seconds, all in favor, and it passes unanimously. Next, approve increase in school employee breakfast prices.
You know, every year we have to change some type of prices in our, in our lunchroom. And this year it's the employee breakfast price. And I would recommend that you approve an increase in our employee breakfast price from one dollar twenty-five cents to one dollar fifty cents. And this will put us in compliance with USDA regulations.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Jones makes the motion, the second. Mr. Weatherly seconds, all in favor, and it passes unanimously. Bids, next.
Okay, Mr. McCauley had sent me a request to get, to get permission to bid some desks and stoves. They have, I think he said about a hundred and fifteen desks at Brilliant that are no longer needed. Most are student desks, some are teacher desks, some are in fair shape, some are in bad shape.
Majority are bad.
And then they are trying to clean out the, uh, Family and Consumer Science Department. And they have some stoves that they would like to take bids on. And, um, they, they have started a new program over there and they, they've got like food and clothing. And they're trying to have things there for students that have needs, and, and Marion County High School's done the same kind of thing. But at Brilliant, they're trying to use that old Family and Consumer Science Department as, as the place to store those things. So they're trying to get it cleaned out. So I would recommend that you give permission to solicit bids on Brilliant High School surplus, use desks and stoves in the Family and Consumer Science Department.
Do I have a motion? Can Ms. Burleson make the motion, Ms. Fowler seconds, all in favor, and it passes unanimously. More bids. PHS mower and tractor.
Uh, let me ask you, did, uh, Mr. Smith contact you about bidding out a tractor and a mower for us? Did he get in touch with Ed Dewitt?
Oh, yeah, Ed Dewitt.
He said he was gonna do that.
I think it might be.
Did you think I put the wrong school?
'Cause I remember him asking about a real mower and that sort of an...
You know what I'm thinking? I think I saw his name and I went back in my mind just to look at him.
Okay, well, I know he wants to sell a tractor and a mower.
Okay.
That was ironic.
But since I am...
Right, okay, then that would change to Marion County High School.
Okay.
Okay, so I would recommend that you give permission to solicit bids, um, Marion County High School Jacobson Tri-King nineteen hundred D wheel mower and a nineteen sixty-eight Ford three thousand tractor. Sorry about that.
Can Mr. Jones make the motion, the second, Mr. Weatherly seconds, all in favor, and it passes unanimously. More bids, buses and chrome books.
Okay, we are going to, at some point, get some money from the State Department. It's called advancement in technology. And, um, we can use it to buy buses, and we know that if we should decide to, then we, we're not gonna have a large turnaround time on these funds because they, it's, they've still got to pass a law that says what the money specifically can be spent on. And then the money all has to be spent by September thirtieth, so we're not gonna have much time. So in anticipation of the possibility that we would like to buy some buses while we have some money, and we definitely need to buy more chrome books, that goes along with our strategic plan of becoming eventually one-to-one in all of our schools. Then, um, I would recommend that you give permission to seek sealed bids for buses and chrome books.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, the second. Mr. Weatherly seconds, all in favor, and it passes unanimously.
And there will be more to come on that after the bill passes, and we know exactly what we are gonna be able to spend that money on. But, um, we got some money last year and then we're gonna get money again this year to, that, that we'll have some decisions to make about spending. But we just knew we needed to, to get this process started.
Next, school trips.
There are several school trips in your share file. It's that way every year at this time of year especially because we have a lot of, um, cheer camps and football, going different places for camps and things. And of course, if it's not overnight and it's not out of state, the board doesn't have to approve it. But in several of these situations, they are requesting private vehicle because they might not be taking as so many people that they have to take a bus. Now, the way we've always done, say, cheer camp is we approve private vehicle, but then if there is a cheerleader's parents who are not able to take them. Uh, most of, I mean, I don't think we've had a situation where there wasn't, but if they don't, if somebody doesn't have a parent that can take them, then they end up having to take a school bus. So that's, that's been the rule the whole time. And the same thing would be true with athletics. If you have fewer than ten that are going, then you can approve private vehicle. Or if every child's parent is gonna go and take them. But there are, um, there are, there are rules that they have to follow. And, um, there are several on the school trips that, that is why I think there may be some that are, um, overnight. But the majority need approval because of the, the, um, private vehicle component, yes.
Oh, I, I want to ask a question. Am I the only one who is concerned about the number of school trips in the spring, uh, that are not necessary? You know, you can't, you, you gotta go play when you gotta play and that kind of thing. But, uh, some of those can be eliminated.
I agree, and that's gonna be addressed this summer. We've spent way too much time this spring, uh, ASCO, that, that has become a big problem.
Exactly, I, I would like somebody to figure out how many school days kids miss, you know, out of the hundred and eighty they have available to them.
Well, Patrick Smith's on here, we have had that discussion recently. It has, um, it's a problem, and, and it will be addressed this summer with the administrators. Because, and so I'm gonna require that they submit something to me that tells me when there's gonna be school time missed because of a ballgame. And, you know, I think they've had, um, instead of having one ballgame a year that students could go to, I think instead of that, some places have had one football, one junior high football, one varsity football, a basketball, a baseball, a softball. And there has been entirely too much time spent at a class. And, um, I have recognized that that is, that is a problem.
How much, how much better could our scores be if, say, we cut out ten percent of that?
Exactly, that's right. I completely agree with that. And that's, um, we are gonna spend some time in July, we're gonna have an administrator's retreat, July eighth at night. We've talked about this program, we're gonna do it this year. And spend some time with our administrators, and that is one of the things I'm hoping to, to discuss because it's, it's that handy. Okay, if there are any, not any questions about the school trips, um, then I would, and these are, there's, these are all, I think, after school about. 'Cause these are mostly summer activities. They're all summer activities. I would recommend that you approve the school trips as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Burleson makes the motion, Ms. Fowler seconds, all in favor, and it is unanimous. Use of facilities.
There were a couple of use of facilities requests, I think they were both for Brilliant. And, um, some activities that they're going to have in Brilliant and, and at different times, I, let me see. Yes, um, and so they wanted, let's see, let me pull it up. It was for a, um, basketball clinic, a music camp clinic. And they're hoping to include students from all over the county in that music camp, which I think is a wonderful idea. And the Brilliant Alumni Association, the, um, elementary music program that they hope to have beginning when school starts on Wednesday afternoons. And then, um, some time for tutoring with students again in the fall. So all of those use of facilities were for, um, were for Brilliant. And if there's no questions, I would recommend that you approve the use of facilities as presented. Does there one for Hackleburg? Do I miss one? Yes, 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 for a dance and twirl recital for, for Hackleburg, that's right.
And they didn't put it in here, but the Alumni Association does put money back into the schools big time.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, that's probably the, the number one thing they do with their fundraiser money.
And the tu, the tutoring, are those volunteers that come to you?
Yes.
How nice, the volunteers to tutor.
Yeah, they're doing it in the mornings before school. And some students aren't happy about their parents.
Yes, yes, I'm yeah. So I would recommend that you approve the use of facilities as presented.
Motion, Mr. Weatherly makes the motion, the second, Ms. Burleson seconds, all in favor, and it passes unanimously. Personnel.
We have, um, several personnel items. We have three certified resignations and two non-certified resignations. Um, the non-certified re- resignations are from coaching duties only, they are certified employees, they're resigning from coaching duties. And, um, if there are no questions, I would recommend that we accept the certified and non-certified resignations as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, the second. Mr. Weatherly seconds, all in favor, and it is unanimous.
Start to say no for Ryan that.
I know. I know, we hate to lose you. And then we have four certified voluntary transfers and two non-certified voluntary transfers. And, um, just moving people around within the system, we don't have, um... And then, you know, the principals will do reassignments within their school, we no longer have to have board action on those reassignments. But these are people that are transferring from one school to another, or in one case from, um, a school to the central office. And I would recommend that you, that to approve those voluntary transfers as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion? Mr. Weatherly makes a motion, Mr. Jones seconds, all in favor, and that's three in favor, all not in favor.
I'm in favor.
Okay, there's three in favor.
Absolutely.
And one of Stitch.
And we have one, um, certified employee for employment. And that would be an English teacher who thought had only had four students retired, we accepted her resignation at the last board meeting. And so I would recommend that we, um, employ the certified personnel as presented for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Okay, do I have a motion? Mr. Weatherly makes the motion, Ms. Fowler seconds, all in favor, and it is unanimous.
Okay, then you have a list of the certified and one non-certified personnel to, um, receive a non-renewal notice. And those will be handed out next week. And if there are no questions, I would recommend that you, um, approve the list of non-renewals for non-certified and certified employees as presented on your handout for the next school year.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, the second. Ms. Burleson seconds, all in favor, and it passes unanimously.
And, uh, yeah, I would say she would pass those back to me, and after we, after we hand them out, those will be, those handles will be released. And then you see a list of postings that have been, um, that things that need to be posted based on a lot of the actions that we just took. And so I would recommend that you approve those postings as presented on your personal sheet.
Motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, the second. Ms. Burleson seconds, all in favor, and it is unanimous.
And I would recommend that you give me permission to post and place, if needed, before the next board meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion? Mr. Weatherly makes the motion, the second. Ms. Fowler seconds, all in favor, and... Ms. Fowler seconds, all in favor, and it is unanimous.
Okay. And then, um, I have just a few things that I would like to mention. One is our sales tax comparison. You can see that in your share file. Have to enlarge it a little bit. So you see that April was down twelve thousand one sixty-five and ninety-three cents from one year ago. However, it was, uh, April was up about fifteen thousand dollars from March. So I don't really, you know, we never know what causes some of these, these shifts. So even though it was down from one year ago, it was up significantly from last month. So that was our, um, our April sales tax was one hundred forty-eight thousand eighty-two dollars and three cents. And Clint does a really good job of putting in red, so we see where we go up and down, but, um, Clint, can you, do you, do we know of anything that could have happened from last April, or is it one of those?
The, uh, the county has changed who collects the county sales tax. Alatax, uh, who had become, I believe, RDS, was collecting for the county, and they have gone back to the state who collected the county tax about twenty years ago. And so some of that may be due to the changeover. Um, but there's normally a little spring bubble, and it was, the bubble was larger last year than it was this year, but, you know, a specific reason, I, I don't know.
But you look at last year, right, in April, it was up significantly from March and May, last year and April, so, you know, it, we're, we're pretty well on track right now. We have given our state assessments, and we are starting to review the raw data right now. We will get data from the state where they actually put it all together and compares to, to other systems, and that will not be here until July. As I mentioned, we are planning an administrative retreat, July eighth and ninth, and we're going to be doing a lot of things with our administrators, and one of those is, you know, reviewing our data and looking at what we need to do for next year. As you all know, the legislative session is still going. Melinda was down there yesterday.
Yes.
Uh, anything you wanna say about yesterday?
Well, what I was down there lobbying for is, I was trying to get a bill passed, Senate Bill four hundred, that will help us get high-speed internet. We talked about, um, buying these chrome books for our kids, but if they don't have high-speed internet, once they get home, it's no use to them. So, um, I'm not sure, um, how that worked out. It was in committee yesterday, and I don't really exactly know how that worked out, but, um, there are several education bills, I'm sure Ms. Dance will talk to us about, that are, they're also hanging in the balance.
Yes. Uh, one of which is the Teacher Retirement and Recruitment Act, where they hope, we hope that they're going to bring a tier-three retirement to our, to our people. I think that's gonna help as far as getting more people interested in going into education instead of tier-two. Um, and I think it looks good, doesn't it, Janine, that it will, that it will pass? And, um, two weeks ago, yesterday, was my District Seven Superintendent's meeting in Montgomery. And so that afternoon in the Education Committee, I was there when Tracy Estes actually introduced his first bill, and it was something that came out of our Teacher Shortage Task Force Committee, and that was to change the emergency certificate from one year to two years and with the possibility of, of renewing that one time for an additional two years. So there's no reason right now why it's only one year, and that would just give somebody, um, more time to be able to pass the practice and, and get everything in line. So, um, again, just trying to find ways to help, to help us bring teachers in and then keep them.
And that will not count toward tenure.
That will not count toward their tenure. That's right.
It can work four years.
Mm-hmm.
Without being certified, they, they won't get tenure during the.
That's right. That's right. So, um, so we hope that's gonna pass. They, of course, have not passed the budget yet from, um, that it's not completely through. Um, Janine, anything you wanna say about the budget?
We have our conference call tomorrow, but.
When do they adjourn?
Well, they haven't till mid-June, but they were hoping to get finished by Royal Day.
Watson?
It doesn't leave many days.
That's why I'm not sure they're coming.
I worry. That was the goal, but, um, yeah, but they do have, because this year is a quadrennium, they have until mid-June to get finished, where normally they would have to be finished by the end of May, so they have more time this year. All right. Now, our next meeting, we looked at June the eleventh, that's a Tuesday, at ten AM. And then right after that, um, we'll be heading down to the AASB conference, those of us that are going to that. And I know that's gonna be a lot of good information. One more thing about AASB, next week, there are two advocacy days. If y'all haven't been to any of those advocacy days before, it's really nice. You go to the AASB office, which is within walking distance to the State House. Uh, Sally and Lisa gives you an update of what's happening that day, and then you walk together into groups, and, um, you're taken to the right place at the right time. You might even get to, to hear some debate, or some exciting things going on there. And, um, so if you, if you haven't reached for that, it's either free, or it's twenty-five dollars. I can't remember exactly. Melinda might.
I think it's free.
Maybe free.
It depends.
Yes.
There may be some that's charged for what, for that.
Okay, but it's, uh, now it's.
But it's not much, but I can reach for it.
When my, when, when we had our District Seven Superintendent's meeting here, that was an advocacy, advocacy day as well, and it's an interesting process. It is, it is very interesting to go down and, and watch, and, you know, and you have an opportunity possibly to talk to our senator or our repres, our representative. So it's, you know, it's nice to, to go down and, and see that process at work, and so it, you know, if you can go, that's the twenty-first and twenty-second, I think.
Yes, yes.
All right. If there's nothing further than I would ask for, I would recommend that we adjourn.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, Ms. Burleson seconds, all in favor, and it's unanimous, and we stand adjourned.